So it's, uh, it looks like it's time to call the meeting to order. Uh, this is the regular meeting of the Alameda County Local Agency Formation Commission, Thursday, July the 10th. Next order of business would be the Puts of Religions.
Puts of Religions. To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for its advance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, I need to do a roll call, please.
Chair Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Bolsh. Commissioner Furia. Commissioner Hubbard. Commissioner Marshawn, absent. Commissioner Miley. Commissioner Splendorio.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Hu. Alternate Commissioner Tan, absent. Alternate Commissioner Rosen.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Warner.
Here.
Let the record reflect, roll call has been taken and we have a quorum.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, it's a recognition of dedicated service. Commissioner would like to recognize alternate special district members Georgine Van Heeter-Leopold uh, for her distinguished ser- service to Alameda LAFCO. Her thoughtful leadership, commitment to good governance, and advocacy for the public interest have contributed significantly to the agency's mission and success. Uh, the commission extends its sincere gratitude for your, uh, twelve years of service and contributions to the LAFCO community. I've also brought, uh, cupcakes, so after when the meeting is over, we can join Georgine in the back room here and have a cupcake celebration. Anybody else have anything to say about Georgine or?
I'll just start really quickly and then I'll let the rest of you, but I just want to say today, the commission would like to recognize and express its deep appreciation to alternate special district member Georgine Van Heeter-Leopold for her distinguished service to Alameda LAFCO. You have been steadfast and engaged member of this commission. Georgine has served with great dedication on both the Policy Budget Committee and numerous ad hoc committees, always bringing thoughtful insights, sound judgment, and a strong commitment to the public service. Your consistent presence attending nearly every Cal LAFCO conference reflects not only your deep knowledge of LAFCO law and governance, but also your ongoing investment in advancing the work of this agency. Georgine's contributions have helped shape policies that support transparency, collaboration, and long-term planning across jurisdictions. Her advocacy for great, good governance and the public interest has been an inspiration to all of us. On behalf of Alameda LAFCO and staff, we extend our sincere gratitude to Georgine for her years of service, leadership, and unwavering commitment to the Cal, to the LAFCO mission and the communities we serve. So, thank you, Georgine.
One little anecdote. Uh, Georgine and I attended the Santa Barbara, or Cal LAFCO meeting a number of years ago, and I was drafted to giving Georgine a ride home from Santa Barbara, and I thought to myself, what, how, I'm not really a talkative person, so I said, how am I going to carry on a conversation with this lady? Well, no problem. She, she talked, she talked half the way, and the other half she slept, so I was fine.
Georgine was just, uh, just had a wonderful guiding hand, uh, when we were during meetings and, well, still does. Still has a great guiding hand, but during me, she was great in that, in Cal LAFCO conferences, she just was, uh, she was the one who forced us to get up at eight o'clock in the morning for that, uh, the elections, right?
Okay.
She's all right.
I'll say something too. I just want to say I've appreciated not only regular commission meetings, but in the, uh, subcommittees we've had too, so I've really enjoyed working with you.
Thank you very much. I, I've enjoyed working with all of you. I'm, I'm really gonna miss it. I can't believe it's been twelve years, but one of those additional things that I do with my life. Um, you can ask my husband, I'm at meetings more than I am at home. So, thank you much. I'm gonna miss Ralph's cookies, so everybody have a cookie on me. He always brings cookies to the meeting, and Peter, good luck. I hope I'm around, I can be around when we finally gain our independence. Thank you.
Good, thanks, Georgine.
We have a hand up?
Okay, so the, uh, next, next item is to welcome, uh, new commissioners. We want to acknowledge the results of the Independent Special District Selection Committee election was held on May tw- May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, confirming the election of Peter Rosen from the Hayward area Recreation and Park District to the Alternate Special District Member seat. So, uh, welcome, Peter. It's nice to have you on board.
Thank you.
We will move on to public comment. Uh, anyone from the audience may address the commission on any matter not listed on the agenda. And within the jurisdiction of Alameda LAFCO, the commission cannot act upon matters not appearing on the agenda. There's a three-minute, uh, limit. Do I have any cards?
No public comments.
Nope, of course. Let's move on to the consent calendar then. Uh, are, is there anything someone wants to pull on the consent calendar?
Don't want to pull, but I want to make a quick comment if I may.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, so I'll mention that the approval of the minutes is Consent Item Six A, and properly has that, uh, Mayor Marshawn from Livermore is LAFCO's Vice Chair, but on our posted agenda at the top, I think it has myself as a clerical layer, so I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you.
But the minutes read, as I recall.
I wondered about that.
Yeah. So did I.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion?
Second.
A second? This will be a roll call vote?
Chair Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bolsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Furia.
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard.
Aye.
Commissioner Marshawn, absent. Commissioner Miley. Commissioner Splendorio.
Aye.
Commissioner Hu voting for Commissioner Marshawn.
Yes.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
Uh, so the next item is an update and presentation on the Regional Water and Wastewater Committee. I'll turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. Uh, so we have a presentation and update on our Regional Water and Wastewater Committee initiative, including this outcomes that we've had. We hosted a workshop on May twenty-first inviting, um, w- water and wastewater agencies and their general managers to attend to discuss what perhaps this committee would look like and what are some, um, hurdles or, um, opportunities, um, informing and looking at water and recycled water reuse opportunities in the bay. So today we have, um, Mr. Eric Rosenbloom, uh, who's leading, um, our consultant on this initiative to uh, provide a presentation to the commission on the updates today and, uh, report back on what our, uh, report will look like come September.
Good afternoon. I'm delighted to be here and, uh, I want to thank the LAFCO board again for having, uh, started down this initiative to, uh, encourage agencies, uh, water and wastewater and stormwater agencies throughout the county to engage in more water reuse. Uh, for the sake of those of you who, uh, are new to the board, this initiative was, uh, really started as a result of the twenty-twenty-one Municipal Services Review, which identified, uh, a potential for water reuse that was not being realized amongst the Alameda County agencies, suggesting that a county-wide Regional Water and Wastewater Committee would encourage that practice. And so, um, I believe it was in twenty-twenty-three, uh, RFP was, uh, was released in order to solicit proposals to create such a committee. Um, our team was selected and, um, we had some discussions about the goal, and I think it became clear to all of us, the goal wasn't to create a committee. The goal was to encourage more reuse. And from that standpoint, we framed the initiative according to an approach that included reviewing the initial plans, the existing plans of the agencies, and how they saw reuse in their future, to evaluate the goals and effectiveness of existing interagency groups, and, most importantly, to meet with the agencies themselves to understand more about their priorities and how water reuse might factor into their future. So we asked them a number of questions, specifically what were their primary concerns? How would water reuse help their, uh, future challenge, meet the future challenges? What factors presented their engagement in reuse, and how could a committee of some kind facilitate their design and construction of these projects? Again, wanting to, uh, acknowledge the, the great work that the agencies are doing and the important job they have of providing reliable water, wastewater and stormwater services, and yet providing them clearly the direction of LAFCO board that they wanted to encourage more, uh, reuse and to see how that could be accomplished. So what we learned from these interviews was that their most pressing concerns were to continue providing reliable service and keep their rates affordable, maintain their aging r- infrastructure, which is a, you know, critical problem for almost all the agencies, keep up with changing regulatory requirements, and last but certainly not least, to manage a number of risks that, that had occurred to them over the last several years, including risks from climate change, natural disasters, cyber threats, and what they saw as an increasingly challenged and uncertain future. It, it was apparent that they understood that water reuse could help address these challenges in a number of ways by offering a locally controlled drought-proof water supply, diverting effluent and pollutants from the bay, making water available for parks and streams and other amenities in a more reliable fashion, and to provide a hedge against climate risk and natural disasters, uh, because of the resilience of this locally controlled, uh, resource. Among the factors that they cited that inhibited their further engagement in reuse was the need for public support and approval from their boards. Again, recognizing that most of these agencies were what we now call single purpose, and water reuse as a collaborative enterprise, in some cases challenged not just the management, but also the elected officials to see why it was in their interest to cooperate with other agencies. Um, additional regulatory hurdles, the use of recycled water is, is strictly regulated in the state of California, which brings legal liabilities, and of course, the cost of new treatment and distribution facilities. Along with these would be the corollary challenges of aligning management objectives and leading a mission-critical organization in a new endeavor, which is a leadership challenge to all the general managers in the area. So their, their concerns were not trivial, they were serious. So the next question is, how could a committee facilitate reuse? And there seemed to be a number of opportunities where having an interagency committee focused on issues related to reuse, I'm using that, uh, advisedly, not reused and maybe directly, but related to reuse, could help create a uniform message and bring the electives together. We only focused on the agency staff in these discussions, but it was clear that an interagency meeting of this sort or a collaborative this sort would offer opportunities for electives to get involved. It could also provide a forum for dialogue with regulators and legislators who would be more likely to attend at higher levels a meeting of a collaborative than they might with meeting with an individual agency. Together, the agencies could potentially take advantage of funding opportunities and they, and even coordinate the rates that they had set to pay for the infrastructure in a meaningful fashion that could be communicated to their ratepayers. And cooperative solutions to multiple management challenges through piloting and joint work of certain types could actually develop muscles, you, if you will, for collaboration between these agencies. And, and last but not least, developing a clearer understanding of the risks themselves that made this effort worthwhile could be a significant contribution of such a committee. So it was, it, it was based on these understandings that we convened the meeting on May twenty-first. Virtually al- almost all of the interviewed agencies showed up, uh, a few did not, but the information was, was just invaluable from all the participants and all the major agencies were, were represented. We asked, what do the Alameda County Water Agencies need to do to prepare to reuse water? And how could a collaborative assist them in that regard? It was important to acknowledge that all agencies are engaged in many, many collaborative enterprises, and these are just some of the different collaborations that they're engaged with, both on a county level, Bay Area-wide, state and national. So it's not from a lack of knowing each other or talking with each other that they have been, uh, stymied by some of these challenges. So if we were to create a committee to address issues that dealt with reuse, to encourage greater reuse of water in Alameda County, we asked them, what would be the topic and scope? What would be the potential outcomes? What geographic area would we want to acknowledge? Because there are clearly differences in Alameda County. Certainly west and east side, if no other, just the west side being more developed, the east side being, having more opportunity for development. How frequently they'd want to meet and who would be the convenor? And I, I want to mention that at last meeting, I think it was six months ago, I had the occasion to address you, and, um, it was acknowledged then that maybe LAFCO was not the right group in perpetuity to have such a discussion, or even for some short period of time, but another group might be more appropriate, so we brought that issue up as well. With respect to the topics and the outcome, it seemed that the one thing that all agencies had in common and were concerned about to a great degree was risk. And they all understood risk in different ways. So it seemed appropriate to suggest that one of the topics that could be of great concern and interest and value to the agencies as a whole would be to understand how risk might be quantified, how solutions could be monetized, and, and what common issues they could face more effectively by working together. And it was in that regard that one of the outcomes they thought could be useful would be to identify cooperative strategies to help design, construct, find and finance more reliable utilities even beyond reuse, that there might be some additional enterties. Most all the water agencies, for example, have enterties that allow them to help in emergency conditions. There may be some elaboration of this that would be appropriate, as well as creating reuse as a more resilient locally-controlled water supply. As far as the conveners were concerned, a number of agencies that we had not originally considered eventually emerged. Uh, two that I think are worth mentioning here. Um, one is the Bay Area One Water Me- Network, which is a, um, consortium of agencies convened under the academic umbrella of Stanford and Berkeley uh, as part of the, um, National Renewing, the National Urban Water Infrastructure Program. Another one that I think is of particular note is the California Special District Association, which has an Alameda County chapter, which is actually chaired by one of the agency general managers, and has an intimate knowledge of the issues that these special water and wastewater districts deal with. So at this point, our remaining task is to summarize all these findings, following up with the individual agencies as needed for clarification, and to submit a report with a recommended framework along the lines I just outlined for countywide meetings, including the proposed topic, scope, outcomes, and potential sponsors. At that point, it would be up to this group to evaluate the recommendations and decide if you wish to go forward and to begin confirming with the sponsor about an initial meeting. So thank you for your time. I'm open to any questions, and once again, I really commend LAFCO for having seen the, the issue and directly addressed it with the agencies to see how we can use more recycled water in Alameda County. Thank you.
Any comments from people?
I have a question. Could you define water reuse? I, I mean, how broad, how narrow is it? I, 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 when you used the term, I was curious. I think I know what it means, but if you could elaborate a little bit.
Well, thank you for that question, because there are a number of varieties. Uh, among the first reuse projects that were practiced here in Northern California were the non-potable reuse, where water is treated from a wastewater plant, further disinfected and clarified, and then used for irrigation, agricultural reuse, industrial reuse, cooling, et cetera. Potable reuse takes that treatment another level, and there are different options there of, uh, wh- water is treated to the point where it can be added to the ground. It can be added to a reservoir, or it can be treated even further and put directly back into a water plant for distribution with the remaining drinking water. Other options that have been pursued elsewhere in Northern California include decentralized reuse, where buildings get, uh, establish a wastewater treatment plant basically in the basement, and the water is treated to such a degree it can be used for non-potable or even potable purposes. And similarly, decentralized systems can be constructed in neighborhoods or clusters smaller than the city level. So there's a number of options that could be evaluated in that regard.
So all that is re- is water reuse?
All the water reuse, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, so I, I did attend the, uh, the meeting, and, um, it was interesting, the people that came were all actually members of the Special District Association. And so it's, it's sort of, it's sort of evolved that, that maybe that's the group that would be sort of the committee that continues to work on this and maybe report back to LAFCO on their progress. Roland Williams, who's the general manager of the sanitary, Castro Valley Sanitary District, is also uh, the executive officer of the Special District Association, and he's going to go to his board, I think in August, and, um, see, get their approval to form a committee, and I think, and it's, like, I know one thing that puzzles me a lot about this is that, maybe Georgine's going to talk a little bit about DIRWAT, but, you know, DIRWAT has a, you know, DIRWAT has this balance of supply and demand. Actually, there's more demand than supply. On our side of the hill, though, we've got plenty of supply, but nobody really knows much about the demand. Where would the demand come from? Are there industries that use this? That's possible. One thing I've thought about a lot is freeway irrigation. I've, I've had an experience in the past, my past career with Caltrans, that they were amenable to using recycled water on the five-eighty freeways, as an example. So that might be something we can take up again. But I think that's where I see this, this, this group heading with the committee, with the Special Districts Committee and coming back. Peter?
Really brief. Um, during one of the Alameda County Special District Association meetings, we had a presentation from EBD, which you had EBD on here, and it was eye-opening to me to see how many mandates and how many hundreds of millions of dollars that the discharge uh, requirements now are going into the bay from multiple waste agencies. And it seems like there may be a potential here if they're going to upgrade their discharge going, uh, this would minimize some of the discharge going to the bay. I mean, you could kind of kill two birds with one stone if it could go in, if, when they're investing hundreds of millions of dollars, part of it could actually be to a recycled plant, and I know that the city of Hayward, a lot of their recycled water goes to industrial use because it's more desirable apparently for the recycled water, because it's cleaner for their high-tech and some of their, uh, biomed, um, uses than it would be, uh, normal po- potable water. So I mean, there's, there's opportunities here, and I think that we're at, at a congruence right now where we may actually be able to do multiple things.
Georgine?
I won't restate my name, I think you know who I am. I have to comment on the fact that since nineteen ninety-one, when Jeff Hanson and John Coleman got together at a CASA meeting and started discussing recycled water, DSRSD and East Bay Mud have been recycling water. We never thought, when we had our initial meeting in nineteen ninety-six, it never occurred to any of us that we'd run out of supply. What has happened, though, is we have run out of supply, and DSRSD is in the process of negotiating with Central San to buy some of their wastewater. DIRWAT has successfully provided recycled water to schools and mostly schools and parks. Golf courses, of course, but mostly schools and parks out here. Uh, we provide it to the parks in Pleasanton. We've been extremely successful with the recycle water program. Uh, I'm very proud to have been part of it, because it took us a long time to get here. We had to convince those of you that are in an enterprise agency know that you can't use one enterprise funds to support another, so we had to first of all determine what the benefit was to the wastewater customers. And the benefit is, is we don't have to pay, uh, extraordinary uh, electricity charges to pump the waste over the hill into EBD. Um, and you're absolutely right, Peter, the, the things that go into the bay are going to be constrained more and more and more. Uh, there are days that we use all the water out here. We don't send anything over, which is even better, as far as I'm concerned. So yes, I'm glad we're there. I'm glad it's, the thought's going to be special districts. I will, I serve on that board, so I will definitely twist some arms, because I think special districts is where it belongs. And it gets me involved again. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgine. That's fun.
Are there any examples in other counties or regionals or COGS where you have, uh, this sort of, you know, interagency committee or cooperation? So if you, if you do convene this in the near future, are there exam- are there examples people can point to, or perhaps a speaker could come and how it, how it works in other, or do you have that example there? All right, there you go.
I want to say, I don't know of any other county, especially a county that acted through a, a sort of an extrajurisdictional board that said to all the water and wast- wastewater agencies, "Come together, uh, on this topic." There have been numerous occasions where agencies have found themselves together to collaborate on projects like this. And, you know, and you see a number of them here amongst, uh, DSRSD, uh, Alameda County, the Tri-Valley Liaison Committee, there, there, where they have looked at this topic, but as far as making a countywide effort specifically focused on reuse, or as we're suggesting, the issues of resilience and how reuse can factor into that, I, I'm not aware of it. That's why I think it's, it was really such a bold move to do that. I, I do want to put a fine point on it. I'm glad that, that, uh, you mentioned the time it takes for these projects to occur. In the course of the interviews, uh, it was mentioned that if you ask people, "Do you think we'll be using recycled water next year?" And they don't do it now, they, "Oh no, we won't," or "Ten years from now, well, maybe." If you ask people, "Are they going to be using recycled water thirty years from now?" Oh, of course. The challenge is, it takes sometimes twenty years to build some of these projects. And so I think the one, the, the real purpose of this initiative that I think is, is does such credit to LAFCO is that you have to get the ball rolling now to have the benefit of reuse in the future, and that really is the goal here. And the reason we suggest looking at resilience more broadly is that we think a more effective way of encouraging agencies to collaborate on the topic of reuse is to help them discover, based on their own individual needs and, and concerns, how reuse will address their fundamental, uh, priorities, as opposed to saying, "You should look at reuse." So that, that's the strategy we've taken. I, I think it's the one that will bear fruit in the long run, and I look forward to seeing how this plays out.
Okay. Any more discussion? This was an informational item. Uh, no actions required at this time. Thank you, Eric. Move on to the next item on the agenda, that's the, um, Sustainable Agricultural Lands Conservation Planning Grant. Turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Chair. So the Bay Area Agricultural Collaborative Planning Project proposes to align policy, strategies, and capacity to support agricultural resilience and land conservation across eleven counties, including Alameda. The total project budget is five hundred fifty thousand. Um, five hundred thousand is requested from Salk, and fifty thousand in matching funds committed by Alameda LAFCO over a two-year period. The project will result in four key deliverables. Um, the first one being a startup strategic plan for a new regional entity, and this is to align farmland preservation, climate resilience, and equity strategies. Um, we're also looking for LAFCO, um, to form its own blueprint, um, to promote to promote consistent updated policies among regional Lafcos for preserving open space lands and supporting orderly growth. Right now, I think we have at least five Lafcos, Bay Area Lafcos committed and joining and participating in this grant project. And then Regional Agricultural Climate Resiliency Blueprint, developed by the Alameda County Resource Conservation District and other Resource Conservation District partners to scale up climate smart agriculture and identify priority implementation projects. And then lastly, we're just also looking at a regional agricultural resiliency data and mapping dashboard to be a user friendly digital platform to track agricultural land protection, economic trends, and planning metrics. These deliverables will be guided by a 10-member advisory council and formed through specialized working groups of local planners, agricultural and climate leaders, and conservation organizations. This project, again, is in partnership with the Alameda County Resource Conservation District. We worked with them in the past on a planning grant. And that was pretty successful. And then now we are partnering with them again, as long as with some other regional partners for this grant. So staff is just recommending to the commission to adopt a resolution of application for Alameda Lafco to serve as the lead applicant and authorize the allocation of $50,000 for matching funds and also authorize the executive officer to return to the commission with a grant agreement if awarded.
Thank you, Rachel. Hey, David?
Question. Are there going to be guidelines or qualifications or some representation that somebody, anybody, at least one person on this committee will have actual agriculture farming experience, their hands dirty, and not be entirely made up of agriculture enthusiasts or others who claim to be agriculture experts? And I say that because I have had more than one complaint or casual observation that we have committee after committee after committee of agriculture, the ag committee, and has no agri, no people with real agricultural experience. So when we see this back, that's what I'm going to be looking for. I'm supportive. I hope we see this, but I really want to make sure that we have that encompassed in the resolution and or when it comes back to me that we implement it in that way. Just my thoughts.
That's wonderful.
I guess a follow on question. So you said there were five other Lafcos that are ready to sign, or was it five total?
Five, five other Lafcos in the Bay Area.
And any of RCD? So there's, so right now there's seven-ish, seven? Right now, they're willing to pony up some level of funding to match?
So I think that could be discussed. Right now, Alameda Lafco, since we're the lead applicant, you know, I took it, staff's recommendation is to just provide that matching funds. The other Lafcos will be participating only for a small blueprint. But if the commission would like the other Lafcos to match or to request to match, I could also be happy to make that request.
Yeah, I think that's where I was going to where Commissioner Hubbard was going. So what are the, who are the other counties Lafcos that are said they're willing to participate in some way?
So we have Monterey Lafco, Marin Lafco, Santa Cruz Lafco, Napa Lafco, I believe San Benita Lafco, and I think Sonoma Lafco. They're on a little break right now, but I think they would like to participate as well. And if I'm not mistaken, I want to say perhaps Santa Clara.
Okay, so between Monterey, Sonoma, Napa, Santa Cruz, we should have someone with ag experience?
Yes, and I also want to add, we are also are partnering with Sabella Cross. And she's the head of the Sustainable Agricultural Education Sage. She works with on hand a lot of farmers and does a lot of programs directly with those in agriculture. And we're reaching out to a lot of organizations just to provide letters of support and letters of collaboration on this project as well.
I think that's where Commissioner Howard was going. Someone who either gets their hands dirty or or is forced to consult those who get their hands dirty because that's how they make their livelihood.
Yep. And I know supervisors in all those counties, and that's good to hear. Those are good. For the most part, we're much more confident that we'll have somebody with experience. It's good. Thank you.
So what what's the likelihood of getting the other Lafcos to share in the cost of this?
I'm, that's a good question. I, I think, you know, it's not unlikely. I just, I don't know how their participation is for a specific project. So I think it won't, it won't be as a huge contribution, but I think they would contribute. We can get them to contribute at least up to between $5,000 and $10,000. I don't want to, you know, say anything. I think this Lafco could do that over a two-year period. But if the commission, you know, would like, staff would reach out to those Lafcos to also make a contribution.
I personally think it's, you know, it's nice to have contribution or buy in or participation in some regard. I don't know if I'd make it mandatory for possibly moving this forward myself. I'm kind of debating that question. But, you know, I think if staff could communicate the value that this project would bring and see if there was a willingness to have them participate, I think that would be something beneficial. At least that's where I'm headed. I don't know if others have opinion.
I agree. If they make a financial contribution, that they're more likely to get involved and be involved and commit and commit.
There's some, some rule that he or she that brings the money gets to write the book? Is there, isn't there something like that?
Yeah, it's, uh.
Yeah. He has the gold, makes the golden rule. You know, open up for public comment.
Is there any, any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
No public comment. So I'd be willing for someone to make a motion at this point.
Maybe before we do, can I ask, is there appetite by the, my fellow commissioners to? I'd be comfortable with just maybe asking staff outside of a motion or formal motion to look for participation rather than make it part of the original motion. So I don't want to speak for us per se, but that's the direction I'm thinking of going. Okay, so then I'll move staff recommendation with the additional ask that staff look if the other Lafcos will participate in some amount to help us with this goal.
Second then.
The motion in the second. Is there any further discussion or any public input on this item? Seeing none, this is going to be a roll call vote?
Chair Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bosch?
Aye.
Commissioner Furia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Aye.
Commissioner Miley?
Yes.
Commissioner Splendorio?
Aye.
Commissioner who?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
So the next item is the Calafco Board Nominations and Voting Delegate. Seth?
Thank you, Chair. So this year, Calafco will host its annual conference scheduled for October 22nd to October 24th in San Diego. And staff asked the commission to consider action items relating to this Calafco conference, one of them being appointing a voting delegate or and alternate voting delegate for this Calafco conference. And then advise staff or the chair on any nominations for the Calafco Board of Directors. And that would be for a public member seat or city member seat. So if there are any commissioners who would like to run or be nominated for the Calafco Board of Directors, and if you are a city member or a public member, you are welcome to submit a nomination packet, application to the chair before that September 19th deadline. And just please advise staff or the chair on any nominations. But at today's meeting, we are looking for a voting delegate, an alternate voting delegate, who will be voting for this Calafco Annual Conference.
Before any of you do anything crazy, several years ago, Commissioner Marshawn and I were absent and the rest of the commission nominated us. And we unfortunately won. So don't. I nominate Splend.
No, don't even think about it.
Don't do that.
I guess the first question is, is anybody going to attend the Cal?
I absolutely will.
I'm going to go. So Splend, I'm going to go. Anybody else?
So move.
You too?
Yeah. You want, oh, you want, should we make the new guy the voting member? You mean, you got to get up early?
Yeah.
That's what it means.
So we nominate Peter to be the voting, voting member. And Splend, you want to be the alternate?
Sure.
Here we go.
All right. Second?
So I have a motion in a second. This is, I guess, is a roll call vote?
Chair Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bosch?
Aye.
Commissioner Furia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Aye.
Commissioner Miley?
Aye.
Commissioner Splendoria?
Aye.
And Commissioner who?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
Can I ask a question? Qualifies hazing?
That's prohibited, no.
In San Diego, no. Only Sacramento, maybe, but.
You're replacing Georgine, so.
Big shoes to fill. All right. Okay, okay.
Okay. The next item is the Policy and Budget Committee Appointments.
Thank you, Chair. Staff, there is a vacancy now on the Policy and Budget Committee. So staff requests the commission appoint one additional member to fill the remaining vacancy. And the Policy and Budget Committee meets on the first Thursday of every even numbered month. And I believe we meet at 2:00 PM at Dublin City Hall here. And our current members include Chair Johnson and Commissioner Warner.
There we go.
Thank you.
Nominate Mary Ellen. Do a formal motion. Staff, we need a formal motion.
I think so, yes, we do.
I'll nominate Mary Ellen.
Okay. Okay, then. So I do have a motion in the second. Is there any more discussion or public input? Seeing none, let's do the roll call vote.
Chair Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bosch?
Aye.
Commissioner Furia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Aye.
Commissioner Miley?
Aye.
Commissioner Splendorio?
Aye.
And Commissioner who?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes.
So our next item is matters initiated by members of the commission. Anybody want to ask a question or? Mary Ann, did you want to?
Yeah, I had a question in regard to our transition to independence. Being on the ad hoc committee, there was a request for proposals for HR and benefits. And the, we hadn't gotten any respondents to the request for proposals. So I was wondering what the next steps are going to be and if we had any other plan in relationship to getting that accomplished.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, yeah, unfortunately, staff, we did not receive any proposals. But fortunately, the county came through and their HRS department recommended a broker. And we are working with legal counsel, staff's working with legal counsel right now to work out that contract agreement. But we don't have to present anything to the commission formally at today's meeting. Given that that threshold, it's under our small contracting authority amount of $3,000. So we can at least get started on some work relatively quickly. And and then if we need to increase the budget as more items or projects come about, then we'll do that. But right now, we did find someone and we're working with them. And I guess this is the report back to the commission, just letting the commission know that we did find a consultant.
Great. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the executive officers' report.
None today.
None today, yeah. About informational items.
I, just a quick update in terms of Calafco. They are hosting their annual conference in October. But they are, they're doing an internal restructuring. There was a lot of, there was, a lot of Lafcos took issue because they changed their legislative committee. And there was a lack of transparency with that change. And it just kind of spearheaded into a lot of issues with the current structure of Calafco from other Lafcos in the state. So the board is definitely listening now to the Lafcos. And unfortunately, the the previous executive director resigned. So they have an interim executive officer from Sacramento Lafco. Thank you. Who's great, Jose Enriquez. And then they're looking for a permanent executive director. They're also, they restructured the legislative committee back to, you know, its original origins. And then they're also use consultant Pamela Miller, who was the executive director for many years at Calafco. She's working as a consultant to kind of do, check, check a pulse and create action items on what will bring a lot of Lafcos back to Calafco. Because of, as of right now, there are many Lafcos saying that they will not renew their membership. So I think now with these plans, with that board update, Lafcos will consider coming back. But it's just been about a year of this kind of uncertainty. So I, I think it would be great for the commission to attend the annual conference. And I think things are on track for Calafco to just becoming a great organization as it is. And I know some of the commissioners also received that webinar. So those webinar series are back on too. So it's just a great resource. And I just really hope all Lafcos in the state continue to be a member. So that's just my report back on that.
So vote wisely.
Apparently, the big thing, when I was reading in the report, so thank you for addressing this. I was, I had a couple of questions and a lot of them were about what happened. And it apparently something happened with the executive director. There's a lot of transparency concerns because that was repeated multiple times and communication issues. So whatever happens, I will try and be transparent and communicate.
So with that, it's time to adjourn the meeting.